I'll call the meeting of the Upshur -- of the Buchanan City Council to order and thank everyone for being here tonight. It's always great to see such a great crowd with us. What I'd like to do is start off with a moment of silent prayer and silent meditation and then we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance. [Crosstalk] Everybody settled in? What I'd like to do is start off with our normal tradition and that is recognize our special guest and that's our West Virginia Wesleyan College students. I'm seeing just a few here tonight. What we'll do is ask you to stand up, state your name, where you're from, Andrew Major, please.
I'm Andrew Waters, I'm from Parkersburg, West Virginia. My major's Political Science and Criminal Justice.
I'm Tyler Kirby, I'm from Bridgeport and I'm a Criminal Justice major.
Thank you. And I'm not so sure I've seen any more Wesleyan students unless somebody else wants to stand up and be recognized as a student. All right. I'm looking at my list for recognized guests and we have some that did sign up to speak and if you'd like to now or unless you're waiting for a specific time in the agenda to do so, Ms. Well, Mr. Campbell, go down to G2. Mr. Osborne, would you like to speak now or wait?
I'll get to speak now, just a couple of things briefly. My name is Robert Osborne, for those who don't know me. One, if it hasn't already been discussed, I would like to see the city have an official Facebook page for pretty much information purposes only where you can put the council meetings, the agendas, possibly some future ordinances. You can create it to where posts, you can limit the comments or have no comments so you don't have to worry about a bunch of stuff being on there you don't want, but I would like to see a Facebook presence, just a way to get more information out to people about the meetings. And also, one other thing I want to discuss briefly is I've noticed that during times where Wesleyan has a lot of family in, there seems to be a lot of, a lot more stops for speeding for out-of-towners, which is a good thing, means the police are doing their job. But what I haven't noticed anywhere is any signs that says the city's speed limit is 25 unless otherwise posted, signs anywhere. So I'd like the city to consider maybe on the interests of Buchanan, maybe think about putting some signs up to at least let the out-of-towners know what the speed limits are in town, just so they have that presence. But to my knowledge, I don't think there's any up anywhere, so just like the city consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Osborne. And just so we can get a couple of those out of the way, so Rich, I do believe we have a Facebook page, am I correct? I've seen the one.
Yes, we do.
And are people allowed to make comments on that page?
No, they're not. They can make messages, but they can't post public comments.
And we could address that and maybe we could see about giving ordinances and meetings and more information out to people. That's very, I think, very much.
All those things are on the website.
Yeah, they're on our city website. Thank you, Rich, you're absolutely right. And that's the City of Buchanan's website. We have not only that, but the minutes, how you can pay, you can even pay online now as far as your utility bills and all of that, so thank you for that.
Let me ask, Rich, if you want to get on the website for the city, what do you have to do?
Well, the easiest thing to do is Google "City of Buchanan," since we are the only city in the world that has that particular spelling, it'll go right to it.
Do we get a lot of hits? Do you get many comments?
Get about a thousand a month or more, 1,200 now, somewhere in that area.
I do know that, and I'm assured that Chief Gregory might back me up, we do have some 25 mile an hour speed limit signs up. I don't know if we needed more. Do you feel that it's adequate that we need more or something we should look into?
I know that there are some, as far as exactly how many, I don't know off the top of my head. You know, I know it's pretty universal, that's residential, business districts are 25 mile per hour speeds, so you know, I don't know. I don't know what to do in addition to that.
I usually pay attention to the slot box.
Yeah, online in the residential areas.
That's a whole, that's a whole issue. Thank you, Chief. Yes.
Speed limit signs, not about speed limits, but I would love to see some signs that let people know what the city limits are for the city, both on Route 33 and on the old Route 20 and the other routes too. I see nowhere but does it say Buchanan City Limits. I think that would be a nice warning to visitors, too, that you're entering some limits, you know, your speed limit has to go down, if we could possibly do that.
Rob, I will absolutely take a look and see how many speed limit signs we have up and maybe we should have some in more visible areas. Thank you, sir, for bringing that up. Before we get to B2 on the agenda, I have a very special honor and privilege to do a mayoral proclamation and it's kind of strange, I've never done one for another mayor, but I would ask Mr. Kenny, former mayor, right mayor, Kenny Davidson, to please join me as I read him a proclamation and honor him with a special, yeah, that we have. Before I read, I'd like this for everyone to see, well, first of all, this would be for you to gavel and stand engraved. Would you like to read what it says?
No, you read.
All right. Kennedy T. Davidson, in recognition of faithful service to the City of Buchanan as mayor July 1975 through June of 1977 and July 2008 through November 2014. And it just has the City of Buchanan Kenny Davidson on there. Before we give him the applause and accolades.
Could have used this a time or two.
He wasn't prepared to give that to you, quite yet. If you would bear with me as I read through the proclamation, it's a short one, but it can be wordy and I'll try not to cry as well. This is a mayor and council's proclamation. Whereas Kenny T. Kenny Davidson has faithfully and honorably served the City of Buchanan for 28 and a half years as mayor, member of city council, and member of the city's sanitary board, including the past six and a half years as mayor, all with great distinction. And whereas Mr. Davidson recently announced his well-earned retirement from his city office effective November 8, 2014, and whereas the city council desires to recognize Mr. Davidson's longtime commitment to the advancement of the City of Buchanan and the improvement of the quality of life for all of our residents, and further to express the city's most heartfelt appreciation for his vision, leadership, and many contributions that have helped establish Buchanan as being one of the finest, the very finest, and most progressive communities in the state of West Virginia. Now therefore, we, the members of the city council pursuant to the power and the authority due invested in us, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 20, 2014, to be Kenny Davidson Day. Throughout our City of Buchanan, to further memorialize Mr. Davidson's devotion to vision for and leadership of our city, the council now hereby bestows upon him the Buchanan Ambassador Award, thus being but our city's second recipient and honoree of this most prestigious honor and award. Appropriately, this council directs the installation of a permanent placard upon the ambassador's bench on East Main Street in front of our city's Stalkers Youth Center to permanently honor Mr. Davidson, said bench bearing the inscription and legend, "The Ambassador's Bench honoring those who selflessly dedicated their lives to the service, promotion, and advancement of Buchanan." We further urge our residents to join the council and our city's employees in expressing their thanks and appreciation for Mr. Davidson's excellent work and in wishing him the best in his retirement from public service, given under our respective hands and the official seal of the City of Buchanan this 20th day of November 2014. Thank you. Any other things you'd like to say?
Tom didn't sign it. I want Tom's signature on there. I won't take a lot of time. I could have used this a couple of times, both ways. But I appreciate this, I thank you all for, everybody likes to be recognized, but for me, it's very humbling because nothing is possible for a single individual. There's no single individual that can accomplish very much, maybe Christ, but name somebody else that did something on their own. And even Christ was surrounded with his followers. And I'm not comparing myself to that. But I said before, I'll say it again, we've got wonderful employees in this city. They do the work. They deserve the applause, they deserve the credit because they do the work. And they're underpaid and sometimes not appreciated as much as we need to appreciate them. And I say to you, if you meet one of the city employees, you see them in yellow or whatever, you know, they do some pretty dirty jobs carrying garbage, out digging in this kind of weather. You dig at waterline today? Yeah, how cold was it? And they're down in there digging in the ice water. Can't imagine what the sewer department has to put up with. And these kinds of things that are done for all of us, you see one of them, you tell them that you appreciate them, they ought to have a plaque, not me. But I thank you very much, I very much appreciate, and this will go in a special place, I guarantee. I appreciate it. Rick, thank you so much.
You've only got five hours left of your special day.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna go make the best of it.
They didn't think you could take 24 hours of it.
Yeah, I'm, I am leaving, I'm going to church. I'm a member of the choir and it's choir practice night, so I'm.
Don't forget the game, Richard.
Yeah, well, the game I'm having recorded.
Thank you very much, that is an honor for me and thank you all for carrying through my reading of that. I'm not one of the best readers in public. Next on our list, we have Mrs. Robin Keough, who would like to speak on behalf of the Animal Care Ordinance. Please, Robin, if you'd like to take.
My name is Robin and last year or so, I've been involved with volunteering at The Pound and some different rescue groups in the area, trying to make a difference for animals. And I am proposing at this time, you stole my thunder, by initiating the Animal Care and Control Board again, which was going to be my first suggestion, but that's already in the works. But I am proposing that we make an amendment to the existing Buchanan Animal Care and Control Ordinances to prohibit continuous chaining of dogs as the primary method of confinement. I've done a lot of research on this and I will be very brief because I know the correct form for that to be discussed will be the board that you've resumed. But the reason why I've gotten involved in this is just not because I love dogs, but from my research, I found out that different groups, the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, says continuous confinement of dogs by tether is inhumane. The American Veterinary Medical Association, which is the premier group of veterinarians, it's not just a fancy group of people that adapt that name, this is the group of veterinarians in the United States, says never tether or chain your dog because this can contribute to aggressive behavior. Chaining does not make the dog protective, it makes it aggressive. And the Centers for Disease Control says that chained dogs are 2.8 times more likely to bite, and dogs most likely to bite are male, unneutered, and chained. And the victims are most often children. Last year in 2013, I've done this research, I didn't know anything when I started this, there was 27,000 people needing plastic surgery as a result of dog bites. There's about 200 deaths a year by dog bites, and like I said, it's usually by chained dogs. 200 is not a huge number, but if that's your child or grandchild for a preventable tragedy, I mean, that is just a tragic occurrence. So this is what I want to study. Buchanan was very, had a lot of foresight a number of years ago, that they did adopt an animal control ordinance, but I think at this time, it needs to be looked at again with the address, with the issue of chaining dogs primarily. The reason why I got involved in this was a couple of reasons, I'll be brief. This summer, I was walking my dogs in my neighborhood and a chained dog got loose and came after me. And I was so startled, this huge black dog came running at me and it didn't even touch me, I fell over backwards. I just fell. And I was this far from cracking my head on the pavement, as I went down, I just thought, please, I don't want to get a concussion here, you know? And I was able to right myself. If I would have been a little bit older, I probably would have broken something, or if I would have been a little bit younger, that dog probably would have nailed me. As it was, I wasn't hurt. Another thing, this summer, I heard visitors at the garage sales and things, the big garage sales, saying, you can tell we came into Appalachia, to West Virginia, because of all the yard dogs. And I kind of took that sort of offensive, I thought that was rather insulting because I hadn't really been noticing that many chained dogs. But in the county, in the outlying areas, there are a lot of chained dogs. And it's not healthy for the dogs, the dogs are often neglected. It's not good for real estate values to have your neighbor have a neglected flea bit dog that tears up the yard, paces, mud, summer and winter. It's just not good for anyone, including the dogs. And then, another thing I would like to add, I hope this is the right form, I don't know the city and the county and the shelter and everything, but I'm requesting that the animal control officer be re-brought back into under the Sheriff's Department. At this time, I understand his direct supervisor is in the Maintenance Department. And I know that as arrangement has worked for a number of years, but I am hoping for the animal control officer, that position, his role to be expanded and to become a more proactive position in the community. This animal control officer might be the first contact a child would have with law enforcement, and it would be good if he's in the community doing teaching about spaying and neutering and dog concerns. And I think it would be better if it was under the position of the Sheriff's Department. And I'm also requesting, just to get it on record, that the animal control officer do follow-ups regarding the spay and neuter because, I didn't know this when I started reading this, I mean, the state of West Virginia does have animal anti-chaining, it has an anti-chaining ordinance, it says you will not cruelly chain an animal. And also, there is the West Virginia Spay and Neuter Act that says you will not obtain a animal out of the county facility unless it's been spayed or neutered, or if it's under the age of maturity for that, you sign an agreement saying within 30 days, you will get that animal neutered. That's been hard to enforce because we have one full-time shelter manager up there and she's on the phone, she's cleaning when there's not the, I understand the other position is part-time, she's up there by herself doing like three people's jobs. So traditionally, she's just made a phone call to see if there's been a follow-up. But if we had this animal control officer that's able to do more things for the animals, he could do the follow-ups in person, which I think would be a lot more effective to have an animal control officer, a person in uniform, checking to see if that law's been complied with or not.
All right. Robin, I know how passionate and passionate you are about our animals, not only just dogs, but cats and all of the general welfare of our animals, our pets in particular. I thank you for bringing that forward. I want to mention a couple of things, though. This morning, there was quite a lengthy discussion at the County Commission regarding everything you just pretty much discussed. Insofar as the animal control, the animal officer, whatever we want to call him.
ECL.
Yes, he is actually going to be a part of the discussions during our Ordinance 300 ordinance, so we can bring up a lot of that with him to do. Unfortunately, and I hate to say it for those that were there this morning, that on this side of the block, we have absolutely no control over the animal enforcement officer at all. We can suggest, and I believe our police department can report, but as far as enforcement of, the only thing, the only real thing that we can do is within Ordinance 300, and that is through our municipal judge, and actually, the mayor has some power within that ordinance as well to enforce. I take everything you've said under consideration, and I do believe those will be all part of the discussion we'll have under the Ordinance 300. And I invite you, as I did before, to please be there and be a participant of it. I will also, and we're going to talk a little bit more about this, we are going to be making some appointments. What I do want to say, and we mentioned at the last, yeah, if you'd like to pass those down, that'd be great. At our last council meeting, that insofar as what the city can in the future do, there's a main board that can vote, and those are the city residents, and there's three of them that can be on that board. And then we have the animal control officer, Humane Society, or the Humane Society leader, and the dog, the Upsher County, Upsher, Upsher.
Lewis Upsher.
Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility, that will also be there. So we are opening up the dialogue for everyone that wants to discuss that. We understand the importance of it, unfortunately, it's been since 2002 that that last took place, but I look forward to that dialogue and that discussion. Our municipal judge, as a matter of fact, has some questions, some issues regarding to the ordinance. So again, thank you very much for that and it was very well said. Does anybody have any comments?
Well, I have a comment following what Robin has to say. I appreciate her passion in regard to animals and their care. And I think one area that we need to also concentrate on, and I'll call some school board members, is something ought to be talked about in even elementary school. Because this is an issue, I think that you need to get out early in life to understand the significance of the cognitive ability of dogs and cats today. A lot of research is being done at Duke University and other institutions, and it's amazing, I've had dogs all my life, and they're very smart, particularly certain breeds. And you know, the God dogs that are out there and the service dogs, it's amazing what they do. Also, in war, it's amazing what they do to help out the military. So I think, I appreciate your comments, Robin, and hopefully you can be on that board, as a matter of fact, it would be a good appointment probably for us to make.
And I meant to add, I think you gave a reminder to me, as a part of that ordinance, the mayor does have the ability to appoint county appointees to that board. Unfortunately, they're non-voting members, but they are members and they do help direct and write into the ordinance what they want to see. And you'll be hearing about more of those appointments as we get closer to that date. If there's not any more comments on that, I think we'll go down to our C on the agenda, and that's our Department and Board reports. Mr. Doss, our city administrator.
Mayor, at this time, I don't really have a formal report. I will remind you that we do have a meeting December 1st, it's a special council session. Some of the topics I hope to talk to you about are the police and fire fees and some type of construction or creation of a building enforcement, building inspector code enforcement position. We continue to work on the home rule, portions of our ordinances dealing with enterprise zones, and also establishment of part-time officer capabilities. We'll be presenting those to you. Do have an update that I want to share with you at this time. We'll wait till the next council meeting, but it is in regards to North Buchanan Park and the grant, the land and water conservation grant we applied for several months ago. There should be an update for you all at the December 4th council meeting. Should be a good announcement, but it's all that's at this point. Other than that, of course, I have a lot to discuss on the meeting on the 1st, the special meeting, and I'll probably chime in a little bit when Mr. McCauley speaks under his position as well.
Michael, are you going to have an agenda for that meeting on December 1st?
Yes, we have to have an agenda.
And can we make, call you, make suggestions about some things that should be on that agenda?
And it is an open meeting for everyone that's in attendance here, a totally open meeting, if you'd like to participate, or, well, maybe not participate, but listen and hear what we're doing when it comes to the issues we'll be discussing, everybody's more than welcome. It'll be in the newspaper and in the announcements as well. Any other questions for Mr. Doss? Thank you, Michael. Chief Gregory, Police Department?
Good evening. A little bit of a show and tell with my presentation tonight. I have actually brought this award before council for, this is the 11th year now, to share. I believe I alluded to this earlier in the fall, that each year around this time, we receive an invitation from AAA Central based out of Pittsburgh to apply for their annual awards program. Their awards program focuses on a number of things that police departments do in the communities, everything from enforcement activities focused on specific issues in your community, for instance, drinking and driving, drug driving. It also focuses on some of the educational and other activities that we do aside from enforcement. We have applied for this award a number of years. This is a national award that AAA bestows upon police departments throughout the United States. And the level of the award is based upon a number of things. One, your recognition and focus on the specific problems that you've identified in your community, as well as your innovation in terms of making a significant impact on those problems themselves. And a lot of what we look at is, we're very blessed to have low and many years, no fatalities within our city, to include not only vehicles, but also pedestrians as well. And we've steadily been seeing, another area to speak about with drinking and driving, we've steadily been seeing a decrease in the arrests. Many years ago, it was nothing to have well over 100 DUI arrests in our community, which is very significant for a small community such as Buchanan. And we've seen that decline over the years. And I attribute that a lot to the efforts of the officers and the awareness that we have relative to that problem being out and about in our communities. The level of the award ranges everything from accommodation to bronze to silver to gold, and then finally, the highest award they can bestow, based upon the response to the problems I noted, is platinum. For those of you that have been in our conference room at the police department, we have an entire wall dedicated to these plaques. In fact, the top row in that room is a decade. And I'm proud to present the 11th Platinum Award issued by AAA to start our second row in our conference room. Another thing I've ordered on throughout the many months this year is our work toward the Volunteers in Police Service Program. And I'm very happy to say that we've seen some response to that. And we've just yesterday finished the training for our volunteers. And we have five individuals who have committed to this program to help us out with non-enforcement related activities. In fact, we gave them a little on-the-job training at the Veterans Day Parade, and I can say that they are an absolute godsend to have available because that's the first time in many years I can remember actually having everything covered in terms of the details that we have. There's many years I've just had to kind of hold my breath and roll the dice and leave some gaps and hope everything works out, just because we didn't have the manpower to cover it. But having volunteers now is a tremendous asset. And so we do plan on using them in the near future to equate the Christmas parade, and there's a 5K the day after that they're going to assist us with some of the major intersections. And then again, as we get through the winter months and progress into spring and summer, there's many, many more activities that go on in our community that we really hope to have more of a presence now that we have some volunteer help. So a very worthwhile program. Just because we ended training, I will add this, just because we ended training yesterday doesn't mean that we're closed to applications. We're always going to be open for anybody that's interested in joining this very worthwhile program. And then once we have enough to proceed, we'll have another class. And hopefully, as we get through winter, we can grow interest even more, and I believe it will take off once we have this commitment and be involved in more activities, we can increase our numbers as we approach particularly the strawberry possible coming up this next spring.
Chief Gregory? Let me interrupt you just one second, if I may. This is the VIPS.
Yes.
The Volunteer in Police Service. The Volunteer in Police Service.
Right.
This would be the group of people that we did the interviews for.
Yes.
That Councilwoman Kapari and I helped interview.
That's right.
And that I miss to, to travel and work with, but another time I'll get to do that. Okay?
Yeah.
Is it possible that sometime you could bring these people in and let us meet them here at council?
But that's, well, yeah, just depending on their schedule, but I know that, um, in addition to the activities, uh, that they're going to help us with, they want to have regular meetings, uh, that we're going to use our Police Department each month, and, uh, certainly we can engage the-
You'd be happy to come in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Matt, um, now there were other people interested. What happened to the other ones?
Other commitments have, have come up. I guess life has gotten in the way, but some of them, uh, some of them are personal, uh, issues, others are, uh, work-related, just, just things that have prevented them from volunteering, and, you know, that happens. Uh, life gets in the way sometimes. Uh, the last thing I have to, uh, to report on is our completion with, uh, our partnership with the Advanced Studies Class at the middle school. As you folks, uh, recall, uh, about two or three months ago, I, in my, uh, report, uh, in the beginning of fall, I'd spoken about our involvement with this program, and at that time, we were gearing up for a mock crime scene. Uh, the mock crime scene was held, uh, in October at, uh, at the middle school, and we, uh, staged dive, it was a homicide and a slashing embezzlement scene. We had to give them some math problems to try to figure out, and, uh, everything culminated, we worked with them throughout the other weeks working on, uh, we actually had a mock grand jury, uh, at the school. We had, uh, some discussions with the kids who were, uh, playing the parts of the prosecutor, the defense attorneys. We talked to them about court procedure, uh, and, uh, different things related to that. And then everything culminated, uh, just yesterday in our circle courtroom, uh, with a mock trial, and it was a very educational experience. The, the students actually, we, we broke about midway, and they actually got to witness a, a, an actual criminal proceeding. Uh, there was a sentencing that was scheduled, and so the kids got to actually, the judge agreed to let them sit and watch and, and see what happened, and, uh, pretty high opening for some of them, just gauging on their jaws dropping, uh, as they saw what happened. But, uh, then they proceeded with their mock trial, very educational experience. The judge walked them through it, ran it like an actual jury trial. Uh, the jury was, uh, consisted of faculty and staff, uh, from the middle schools, some community members, uh, as well as a few students, uh, for the jury, and, uh, ended up returning a not guilty verdict on both counts, so very, uh, very interesting and eye-opening, I think, for some of them. Um, that's all I have to report. I have, uh, just the comments, uh, looking down through some things that may have affected the Police Department. Uh, reviewed some of the proposals. Personally, I don't see any issues with the, uh, the heat ride or the, I know you're going to take up, um, the issue with the, uh, bus parking in the loading zone. I don't see any issues from our end unless you folks have any questions relative to that or anything, uh, additional to that relating to the Police Department.
Um, any other questions for Chief Gregory?
I have a question, I have a comment. Um, Matt, I know that you and, uh, your fellow officers have a lot of, uh, influence on children at different times of the year when you have what you just did, and then also the, uh, the program in August, but one area that might be a good component for the future is to talk about animal care and, uh, what the problems are. And, uh, I think, I think the children would really, uh, take that very seriously coming from a, uh, police officer.
Yeah, sir, absolutely. Uh, and in fact, we're, we're planning on having another youth police academy, uh, this next summer. It was a very successful program, if you recall, um, not this past summer, but, uh, the summer before last, and certainly that's something that we could entertain working into the curriculum.
Matt, let me congratulate you and your department, and tell your, your crew, your staff, and all the officers what a great job you do for our community, and on behalf of myself, and I'm sure of City Council, and I'm sure all of the citizens who you protect. Congratulations on your Platinum Award. That's fantastic. I've seen that wall, and it says a lot about year after year, the protection you give on our streets. The VIPS is awesome. I'm so glad to see the communities involved, and again, we are still taking the applications for another class, so please, if you really want to be involved, that is extraordinary, and it's a, really a worthwhile, uh, worthwhile commitment to your community to give back. And last but not least, uh, your, your Advanced Students Program is, I got the opportunity to take last year, I got to tape it for Channel 3, and, um, the kids really get a lot from it, and I think in the future, it's something they can keep with them, and as they go through their, their school career, educational careers, as I put it, um, it gives them an opportunity to, uh, see perhaps, maybe that's where they want to proceed, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Congratulations. You gave what a great report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt.
Um, I'm guessing this time it's, uh, Mr. Landis with the Water Department, all right? Just for Kelly Arnold. Kelly Arnold. Long day.
It's all right. Fifty-fifty. So, I just touch on a few things that we have worked on this past, uh, we had two water leaks. Uh, we abandoned temporary service at the armory. It's completed, where we no longer needed it for construction. Uh, on the hydrants, of course, we reported last month that we had finished flushing all the privates in, but, but we also went back and revisited any, uh, sometimes they don't drain the way they should, so we could revisit those to pump those out to make sure with the upcoming freezing temperatures that they don't freeze. Uh, we've done that. We, uh, actually went ahead and poured, uh, all our concrete, trying to get all our blacktop up to date before the blacktop plant shut down. Uh, the concrete's pretty much all in place now until something else breaks loose. We continue to monitor our dead ends for chlorine residual, which we're trying to maintain at least a point to free chlorine at the dead ends flowing until we do. Uh, we've repaired a couple of commercial meters to try to make sure the accuracy, we have to maintain accuracy in 2% fast or 2% slow. We have to be in that range, uh, with the PSC. Uh, some things we discussed that we're going to be trying to work on is relocating Hodgesville's, uh, one of their meter pits that's on Old 33. Uh, we've been working with them, trying to get them to put a backflow prevention in at the meter site, so we may be relocating the meter. We're just going through some preliminary planning and that right now. We're looking at some mixing for some of our water tanks to, uh, keep our residuals up in some of the tanks where we don't have as much pull off from or turnover, but also we want to do some sampling on those and see if it will help with the disinfection byproducts by mixing them. We're looking at all those flushers as far as on some of the hydrants at the dead ends, and a lot of these things we're trying to do and house build within ourselves instead of- To give you an idea, like, certain types of mixers are around $30,000 for a tank, but we're talking to some other water departments, like in Beckley, uh, they can build one for like $300 or $400. I mean, it's more of a primitive than, but, I mean, for pilot study, that's what we would be trying to do here. Uh, we've also been looking at Pringle House taps. That's going to be coming up. They've applied for those for the fire service and their domestic, and also Courthouse Fire Line. They have, uh, paid the monies for that, and we will be working on getting that across. And also, Richard Trent gave us an end-of-year financial statement, and then Tom gave an update on the, to the Water Board for Senate Bill 373, which he's had a very full plate of that as far as trying to get everything together on that. Uh, the Water Board didn't vote to adopt Conservation Plan as approved by the PSC, which, that's their plan. We just adopted it where we really don't have to go through a bunch more headaches with it. And then Tom asked me to make this announcement, that there will be a public meeting on December 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Event Center on Brushy Fork, and this is for the Source Water Protection Plan, uh, for Buchanan River. It's beef for the Buchanan River, but we'll be discussed.
What, what time is that? I missed it.
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
On the same day.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I would encourage all of our citizens who are interested in source water protection and groundwater in general, please come out to Brushy Fork that day, that evening. Um, if you haven't been to the Brushy Fork Event Center, this is a great opportunity to see it and how it can be utilized for meetings, and, um, I want to congratulate both of you. Tom, in particular, on that program. Kelly, your crews for all the work that you guys do, and your crews, uh, at the plant. Um, I don't, I can't say enough, as Kenny Davidson did, that you guys make us really look good and you really work hard, so thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Kelly Arnold?
I just got one comment, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you know, when you talk about in-house building something that, for $300 or $400 and saving, what, $20,000 maybe?
Yes.
Okay? You know, that's something to be proud of, and, and, um, we're very lucky to have people of, like you all, there doing that, because that saves the city a lot of money, and we appreciate that.
I would say that there's been, I know I've been with the city almost 25 years, and when I first started, uh, we had to do what's called backforce at the intake, and what it pertained to is when the river got up, your turbidity got up, it would clog the streams while the water come into the intake, and you would sit up there for hours, hit air, and blow the screens off so that they could continue to pump. And it was a very boring job. I mean, it was overtime most of the time, but holidays and whatever. And, uh, the guys had got together and we looked at a valve that could work off a timer electric, and it's been going on probably for, I would say, the last four to five years that we haven't had to have somebody really up there to backforce. Tom's operators could go up there, they can set the timer, and it saved thousands of dollars with doing that.
That's amazing.
But they are, all of them is a good group of guys as far as trying to be, use their knowledge pertaining to repairs and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Tim Rock, uh, the Sanitary Department?
Good evening. I would, um, like to start out by telling you that we received the, um, purchase-sale agreement from the CX, uh, CSX Railroad going out 33 West, and we're purchasing the railroad grade to, for future sewers. Um, so we received that agreement today. We have to move ahead with the survey and move ahead with the purchase of that, so that, that is coming along. Um, we received communication from the DDP that we should get an answer about our NPDES permit appeal, um, by the end of this week, and we haven't received that yet, but that's a really big deal for everybody in this community, because we're talking lots of money to comply with, with what DEP thinks we need compared to what we think we need. Um, I would like to bring before your attention that we think maybe we should do a storm sewer upgrade in conjunction with the, um, with the state road who is in the process and working on a three-lane in front of McDonald's, and up through that area, they're making a tongue lane, and in their plans, they have three 18-inch sewer, storm sewers that are going to tie into a 10-inch storm sewer on Tucker Street, and, um, Tucker Street down, it belongs to you all, and, uh, we're not sure that's going to work out. We have problems in that area now, and they're going to put more water more quickly in this storm sewer, and so we're, we're thinking and looking at that project. We think we should.
Do you get a cost estimate for us there this summer?
We, we can do that, yes. Um, the Pocahontas Street job that we just completed, um, it's all done. The little piece we did, we renewed a section sewer that had 12 houses, and in the course of this project, we smoke tested these 12 houses because extraneous flow is a big problem at the Buchanan Sewer Department. Two of the houses, two of the residents have storm sewers in the, in the sanitary sewer. And I bring that to everybody's attention, because not only is that not in compliance with our ordinances, but I have physically stood in people's basements when it's raining, and something happens to the sewer downstream, and when it's raining and your storm sewers, your roof drains are in the sanitary sewer, there's not much you can do but watch the water come in your house. So, it's not just for the city's benefit, it's for everybody's benefit that they disconnect these, and, and we're working on that. Um, we're doing a little upgrade project on Franklin Street to correct some issues of behind the Caphin Church and another residence there. That's what we're working on now. Um, we're working at the plant very hard. This weather is, uh, it's really hit us hard, but we're trying to get a, our grit project, um, under roof and heated and, uh, and, and working before the weather gets too bad. And our other crew is at Mark Avenue trying to finish the project we started last year before the, uh, before we had the failure at the cottage. That's about all I have to report.
Thank you, Tim. Um, any questions for Tim? Tim, again, thank your crews for everything they do. Um, we couldn't, uh, flush our permit without you.
Right.
But thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Clements, did you want to report anything from the zoning, planning, or IT aspect?
Uh, when we get down to, uh, the ordinance for the, uh, long-range comprehensive plan.
Okay, sir. We will certainly do that. All right, Mr. McCauley?
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Few, uh, handful of, uh, updates before we get into these draft ordinances. First, um, I think I'm pleased to report that the Angus suit that was filed, oh, probably last January, has apparently been settled. Uh, that's the word from the insurance company's carrier. Uh, the paperwork isn't, uh, hasn't been received yet, so I'd rather not comment on the specifics relative to the terms of the settlement, but it appears as though that case has gone away. You might recall at the last meeting, I indicated that mediation had been scheduled for November 19, so that did not occur. So, it looks like it's settled, and hopefully we'll have paperwork in hand in just the next few days. Uh, continue to work on the Sudden Link franchise agreement. Um, remember that going all the way back to the late 80s when Jack Fuelheart with Cable Vision came to Buchanan, we partnered with him, uh, we were very thrilled and pleased to have, uh, the type of TV cable that came along in the mid-late 1980s, and we entered into a lease agreement with the cable company at the top of Cemetery Hill. Um, it's been a good operation, a good partnership. As you know, over the past year now, there have been some issues with that site being used more and more by the cable company. Uh, the council, Mr. Holland, have expressed concerns about some of that activity, especially since the city doesn't receive any remuneration for them using the site. So, what previously was a gratuitous lease arrangement that tied in with the franchise agreement, we are separating that out. Uh, that's a pretty complex agreement that I'm going to have to, uh, separate out from the franchise agreement. That part of things is in my court. What Peter Brown has proposed is since the TV cable franchise is due to expire on December 31, and we've also done this the last two or three times that the franchise, uh, agreement with the cable company was about to expire, we have a resolution that council passes in December that gives us another three months or six months to do the additional wrap-up work. It allows them to tell the public information, "Look, we still got the blessing of the city of Buchanan to do what we do up there," uh, while we further along the, the ordinance. So, at one of the meetings in December, I will bring that before the council and have it on your agenda and ready to look at. But we are making good progress, uh, with the Sudden Link franchise agreement.
How many years is that lease for?
The, the lease as it now is ties in with the term of the franchise agreement, which is five years.
Five years.
So, the, so the last, the last lease was the same period of time, January 1, 2010, through December 31 of 2014.
What, what's the program, three or six months extension?
Well, I, I think six months is what we went with the last time. Um, I can't imagine it would take that long, but, uh, yeah, it's, rather than have to do, a couple of times ago, we had to do back-to-back three-month extensions while we awaited getting additional information from them on the franchise. So, if we just go with six months and we have it done in two months, it's, it's good to go, so. Um, working on mutual aid agreements with Chief Gregory, uh, on our, to, to help bolster, um, the, the drug investigative opportunities with not only the Upsher County Sheriff's Department and the State Police, but further with our, uh, potential task force partners in Lewis County with the City of Weston and the Lewis County Sheriff's Department, and then last- And then lastly, one of the things that we've had pending for some time is the resolution of, I wouldn't call it a controversy or a dispute, it's just a longstanding issue concerning one of the tanks and the pump station site at the Deer Creek subdivision. I've been working with the attorney that represents Sherry and Virgil LaRosa, and we are very near completing that arrangement. There's a deed and an agreement that I've been working on that we just about have finished up. So, those are those housekeeping matters. Now, the more significant business at hand are these various draft ordinances that you have. I'd like to just introduce these to you by caption and give a brief explanation as to what they are about. None of these tonight are presented to you as first reading. It's simply setting the table for what will be this number of ordinances that the first wave, if you will, will come at the December 4 meeting. And then, born out of your workshop, I'm anticipating on December 1, as we get into the first of the year in January, there's probably going to be another three, four, or five ordinances coming. But I warned you all with the memo last time that there was going to be eight, 10, 12 ordinances coming down the public. So, this is the first four of those. And there's no particular necessary chronology or significance in the sequencing, although I would say the first one that I've identified as ordinance number 385, I do believe is the most pressing and important of the four. And that sets time as you actually consider this on first reading. It would be proposed as ordinance number 385 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance adopting the city's comprehensive plan pursuant to Chapter 8A, Article 3, Section 1 et sec of the West Virginia Code as amended. And I'm not going to read all the whereas's tonight, but in a nutshell, you know that for a period of the last several years, there was a 2015 committee that I think was first convened back maybe in 2008 or 2009. And that group was designated by the city and the Planning Commission to sort of be the data gathering entity that would put together the first part of the comprehensive plan. There've been all kinds of public hearings and public hearings, and we've been talking about this for six or seven years now. At the October 28 meeting of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission unanimously agreed to recommend adoption of what became the Buchanan 2020 Plan because 2015 is almost here. And since we're talking about planning into the future with 2015 almost being here, it was slightly renamed. Rather than me go through the plan, which I don't know nearly so well as our most erstwhile city zoning and housing enforcement officer, this is the pause for me, while I defer to Mr. Clemmons. And the reason that he is making this presentation tonight is not just because, oh geez, we've heard about this six times already in the last year. It is because, under the state statute, there is a provision that says, "At the meeting, following the meeting, at which the recommendation of the Planning Commission is made, there shall be a presentation on behalf of the Planning Commission." I already have that built into the ordinance. So, a few days ago, I told Mr. Clemmons, "Gee, I really hope you're going to do that presentation that the statute requires," so that I can honestly say in the ordinance there was a presentation. So, Mr. Clemmons, it's time for your presentation.
Guess it'll only take a half hour, 45 minutes, right?
[laughing]
Just kidding. Yeah, as Dave indicated, this process started actually maybe even 2007 with some early discussions and so on. But there was some surveys done, statistics compiled, drafts written, public meetings, public presentations, an advisory committee of about 40 individuals assembled at three different occasions. And as a result, after a couple of years, came up with a 2015 plan. There were three pieces of that plan. Well, actually, let me back up for a second. The state code says there must be at least these 13 issues covered in the plan. They also give you another half dozen extras that you may or may not choose to include. But of the 13 areas that must be required, there were three, land use, housing, and transportation, which the local committee did not really feel capable of undertaking on their own. And consequently, it wasn't until our esteemed treasurer and administrator, Michael Dos, brought some resources of WVU together to put together a professional plan from some individuals at WVU on those three areas. So, that occurred about a year and a half ago, I believe. We got the first draft of that and then a final draft. Public meetings and public hearings on that as well. The bottom line was then we had a complete plan in terms of all the topics, but obviously over a five-year period or so, it had kind of slipped in terms of what was relevant, what had already been completed, and so on. So, after some preliminary discussions, I was directed by the Planning Commission to go through and basically not change the 2015 plan because it is a living, working document. It's always changing. But to go through and parenthetically mark what had been done, what still needed to be done, what was partially complete, and to change particularly on the goals, the recommended timeframe. So, for example, here there's an objective C 3.1, and its recommended timeframe was originally July of 2009. Part of it has been done, but most of it hasn't. So, what we're saying is, at this stage of the game, we'd like to see that done by 2016. Other portions are completed and they're marked that way. So, we've updated the plan. We have added the additional elements of the transportation, the land use, and the housing plan, which was completed. We have gone through as a planning commission and updated a number of goals and objectives that were in that part. And we present to you the plan renamed, and literally, it's just renamed in a lot of ways, Buchanan 2020 Comprehensive Plan. Both the original 2015 plan, the state code, and the 2020 plan have been, are available on the city's website. The 2015 plan has been out there for several years, but now it's been updated and it's available. But with the 2020 plan and with, what did you say, 385? Is that the number on the ordinance?
Yes.
It is important that the city council move ahead. The Planning Commission has recommended its adoption, and I recommend its adoption and encourage its adoption, and to move ahead so we can file the plan with the state and have our comprehensive plan. Now, when I say that, it's not a plan that you just sit there and check off and, "Okay, we accomplished this." It's certainly always open to discussion. It's certainly always open to change. As I think the chief said, life goes on. So, to try to say that these things are the absolute items that need to be accomplished, that's, it's a vision. It's a plan. It's an idea. But certainly needs some refinement continually over the future of the plan itself. So, unless you have any questions, I'll stop.
Any questions? Rich, let me, before you go, let me commend you in particular. I know that it took a lot of people to develop the 2015 and the many years of dedication you gave to that as a leader to get us to our 2020 plan. I want you to know that I had the opportunity. I was one of the beginning, I was one of the first committee members that started. And we started from scratch. We had to start with a textbook. I believe you found the textbook. And we, it was almost like taking a class to see what the comprehensive plan was all about, why you have a comprehensive plan, what are the designs within the comprehensive plan, what's your goals within the country. And I could go on and on and on, and we did that for many years. And I got to tell you, Rich, CJ Rylands, the Martins, John Scott, rest in peace, he put a lot of work into this. Dave McCauley had a lot. Steve Foster played a big part in it from the Development Authority at that time. I can't commend you enough personally for the work that you put in with the comprehensive plan and where it is now for our city. To have that now as a living plan for us to continue the growth of this city based upon that plan, like you said, it's a living document. And I just want to express that to you from seeing it from the beginning and finally seeing it come to what I can see as the conclusion of a comprehensive plan that we're going to submit to the state. I'm just excited to think about that. And you should be really proud of yourself. And I want to commend for everyone here, all the people that put forth an effort to make that comprehensive plan, the 2020.
One very critical name that you didn't mention, I'm sure, not because of, it's just that there's been so many people involved, is Al Tucker.
That's what I was going to say.
Al Tucker was the master who sat down and took all of these documents, everybody's style, and created a document that fits together. And Al is, deserves a tremendous amount of credit for the act.
Probably should have a resolution recognizing Al because this could, you know, he powers and hours.
Probably well over 1,000 hours.
I'd like to see some sort of little plaque or something with the names of those people as the original founders of the Buchanan plan because...
Well, it's one reason the beginning of the document does not change.
And I like that, yes.
The names of the folks that were originally involved are still in there.
Right.
As they were then. Did not attempt to keep all of that updated, just left it as it was originally.
Because they were the...
And I would also note that prior to 2004, the state did not require a comprehensive plan. There was no such thing. It was a piece of legislation in 2004 that said cities like Buchanan and all the other cities must have a comprehensive plan. So...
And what are the consequences, what are the consequences that you don't have one?
You have to start over on everything, including zoning.
You can't amend your zoning ordinance until you have a comprehensive plan.
It is very critical.
It's been a major effort, yes.
It's kind of sad we've taken it this long to get there because we're under the deadline to do it, December 31. But having said that, we've got it. It's done. There's a plan there. And it's a really insightful document, a living plan. And if anybody, I would encourage anybody gets the opportunity to read through that. We've shortened it quite a bit, so it's not the big novel that it used to be. But that's because a lot of the things have been accomplished in all those years by the folks that did it. So, thank you again, Rich. I just wanted to...
Thank you.
And the members of the Planning Commission too, just recently, because going through those studies and learning about that too, it's a continuous, continuous learning process.
Thanks, Paul.
There are two findings of council in Article 1 of this ordinance that, again, you'll take up on first reading next time. I think that they're short, but they're very important. You can read the nine whereas's too. But the two findings of council under this proposed draft, Article 1, Paragraph 1, that officials and other representatives of the city of Buchanan, including through the members of its Planning Commission, have diligently worked toward development of the community's comprehensive plan for several years, and that intensive effort has yielded a very comprehensive document identified as Buchanan's Comprehensive Plan 2020. Two, that the council of the city of Buchanan does hereby adopt all of the recommendations of the Planning Commission, as are set forth within the commission's report dated November 6, 2014, and as emanating from the Planning Commission's October 28, 2014 meeting pertaining to the city's comprehensive plan, and in so doing, does specifically hereby adopt by reference in its entirety the Buchanan Comprehensive Plan 2020 dated October 28, 2014, as the comprehensive plan for the city of Buchanan referenced thereby, and which comprehensive plan is hereby incorporated herein as if the provisions are the same were set forth herein. This thing's 100 pages long. We don't want to fill up one of our ordinance books with what really is an exhibit that might be amended three months, six months, a year down the road, and probably should be.
It would be.
So, that document will always be in there. And similar to what we do with the city's zoning ordinance, I think Rich would concur with this, that as these addition will drafts come along, you will just attach it as appendices to the original document. I would also mention to you that there is a statute within this same section that requires the comprehensive plan that says this comprehensive plan will be good for a maximum of 10 years. So, this isn't supposed to be a thing that you do and you put it on the shelf and say, "We never have to do that again." The nature of comprehensive planning is, is it's revisited periodically. So, the Planning Commission will never completely lose sight of this comprehensive plan. And probably at least once a year, I would recommend that one of those meetings of the Planning Commission be dedicated to, "Okay, let's already, let's start looking at that 2030 plan already. Don't wait until, you know, that 10-year period is ready to expire before that process starts."
Absolutely right.
Ordinance 386, caption would be, "Ordinance 386 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 244 of the city of Buchanan by rezoning all of the real estate, that is 5.4 acres, annexed into the corporate limits of Buchanan in July of 2014, from R1 single-family residential district to industrial district." One of the recommendations of the Planning Commission, back again to that October 28 meeting, it was a November 6 report that was filed with you, one of the three things, other than the comprehensive plan, was a request to rezone the ADS property that's right now R1, because when you annex property into the corporate limits, it comes in the most restrictive way possible, to rezone it industrial, which is what the property around this property is already zoned, it's in the city of Buchanan's limits, that is as industrial. So, again, I ask you to look at that ordinance between now and first reading next time. And then lastly, not lastly, the three of the four, ordinance number 387 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance amending zoning ordinances 244 and 383 of the city of Buchanan by repealing the college district. This ordinance really does two things. It removes the college district that was affected back in August, and in its place returns all of the property that had been put within the college zone back to its status that existed prior to the college district. So, those are three of the four ordinances. I'll briefly introduce to you the fourth of these four ordinances and then let Mr. Dos, it's his brainchild, so he can take all of the credit or the blame, depending upon how council reacts to this. This is ordinance number 388 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance authorizing the payment of longevity pay for full-time municipal employees of the city, including the employees of all four of the city's utility boards. And these whereas's are pretty short, so let me just give them to you real quick. Whereas, Chapter 8, Article 5, Section 12 of the West Virginia Code entitled "Compensation of Officers and Employees" specifically provides that the governing body of every municipality shall have plenary power and authority to provide by ordinance for the allowance of time off of officers and employees with pay for vacations and onus, and for personnel management incentives, all as additional consideration for their services and employment. And whereas the city council previously adopted and approved an employee handbook, the provisions of which apply to all city employees, and whereas the city's employee handbook specifically provides, under the caption, "Longevity," that, and this is the language that's been in our city employee handbook for going on three years now, "The city recognizes the value of employee service and long-term commitment and dedication to the city of Buchanan. For that reason, the city may choose to implement longevity pay as a monetary benefit for employees. Longevity pay will only be approved annually and if the financial stability and conditions of the city's budget allow for implementation. Longevity compensation will be treated and paid as separate compensation from regular wages. An employee's year of service commences on the anniversary date of their hire, and employees do not get credit for any years of service until the accrual of one complete year from their hiring date anniversary." And the ordinance continues. There are some findings of council in Article 1, this formula that I'm going to let Mr. Dos explain. I see a problem already. Findings are Article 1, and then I drop down to Article 3, which should actually be Article 2. So, that needs to be reloaded. But I think the substance is okay. I asked Mr. Dos to edit this for me, then it shows you what kind of an editor he is. It's all his fault. So, Michael, maybe you'd like to say some things.
You'd have me lost at Article 2. No. This is something that I've looked at for several years. And some of the veteran council members may already be familiar with this. One of the things we wanted to do, and one of the things before I got here, was the city had a tendency sometimes to create... had a tendency sometimes to create Christmas bonuses and we discovered that it's really not appropriate to provide a Christmas bonus, so we did away with that. And one of the things we wanted to look at was actually having the ability to recognize our employees and their years of service here with the city. So what we created was this concept of longevity, which has been used by other municipalities in the state of West Virginia and other states, cities in other states, and we wanted to recognize their years of service. So we established essentially what would be identified under the ordinance under F, under Article 3, a tier system. The tier system starts with an employee, starting at three years based off of their anniversary date, and you can see from three to nine years, the monetary amount that they would receive annually in longevity and then goes from that to 10 to 17 and ultimately the third tier, which is 18 or more years. So we have a minimum and we have a maximum cap. Again, this would be implemented and reviewed annually. Annually would be the time when council is sitting down to discuss the general fund budget, because council deals with the general fund. And at that time, if there's certain conditions with us fiscally and we're in good shape, then that would be an opportunity for council to advance within their budget longevity for that coming fiscal year. If the conditions are not right financially, it would be upon myself or someone in my position to advise council. Other circumstances, if other benefits increase and council's committed to those benefits, such as health insurance, it may be an opportunity for council to explore the validity of longevity for that year. So this is not guaranteed every year, just to make that clear, it is not guaranteed every year. But it does provide a little bit of an incentive for employees, it does recognize, and we hear this all the time and we heard it tonight, about employees and what they do for the city and really the money that they save the city financially by taking upon themselves to do some projects that we would otherwise contract out and have to pay a prevailing wage. So we feel that this is a nice thing that the council and the city could offer their employees, it's a credible formula, so it's not just giving someone a bonus, there's substance to that. It does in the first tier recognize that employees from one month to short of three years do not get longevity, so not every full-time employee will get it. The longer you're here, the more dedicated you are to the city, the more you move up in the tier system. Again, there's only three tiers and you can see those within the ordinance proposed. Again, I've mentioned this to several council members in the past.
Mr. Doss, can you hold just one moment, please? Mr. Pew or...
Computation on the hearing. Do some computation on what this comes up to.
Oh, well, listen.
I don't listen to them.
Yep, you're clicking.
Thank you, Mr. Doss.
Actually, you know, I'm fine at this point, I'd probably be better to answer questions.
Let me, and just for clarification sake, that I, and I, Mr. Doss had mentioned this to me before, and we had talked about it long before I was even considered as a mayor, to be, become the mayor. We have been so conservative and we have done such a great job through Mr. Doss's fiscal management of our city, we have been in such a conservative mode that a lot of times we haven't taken the opportunity, we have the annual increase in pay or in raise, you know, as you have your cost of living increases on a yearly basis. But unfortunately, because of the conservative nature and of course because of the economy over the last nine, eight or nine years, we haven't actually been able to have the opportunity to give back to our employees in a more beneficial way perhaps, and we'll just say it, in a monetary way or a physical way to give back. Mr. Doss came up with this plan quite a few years ago and when he introduced it to me, I couldn't help but appreciate the fact that we would have the opportunity to recognize our employees in this manner, particularly around the holiday season as we all know is a tight time anyway. But I want to thank Michael for bringing that forward and I want to thank David for his writing of it. As you can see, the tier program, it's only designed to help those from anybody that's already dedicated three years of their employment with us and also it would help through attrition as we feel as an incentive as well. So having said that, I wanted to make sure that, one last thing I'll add to that, as you notice, these are all drafts, because I feel, and when I spoke with Mr. McCauley, he thought as well that as opposed to just bringing the first reading for us to approve or not approve, I thought maybe it's about time and for consideration of the council members to take it home for a couple of weeks, take a look at the language, see if there's anything you do want to change within this ordinance and then bring it back or we can have discussions at the December 2 meeting to really address and maybe perhaps have a first reading. So my suggestion would be in the next two weeks, it is a little bit like homework, take a look, see if there's any wording or anything that needs to be done. At the end of this, I would say that you could get with Mr. McCauley or Mr. Doss in concerns that you may have in the drafting and we could bring these before the council on the December 4 meeting. Now, I would open up the floor, oh well, let me stop there. Mr. Doss, you're completing, it's your part of it.
Yeah.
Mr. McCauley, would you like to continue in any way?
It's, the rest of it's pretty simple, other than the screw-up with my not having an Article 2, but I could come up with something. Article 3 will be Article 2, additional provisions for calculating employee longevity pay, such things as this bonus, if you will, will be taxed. It's not just, I mean, it all, everything that goes into the regular payroll would be impacting this. There is an opportunity, we don't know every single little nuance that could occur, arise as a result of the administration of this. So there's an article in here that I stole out of the zoning ordinance, instead of saying the city zoning officer can do it in a zoning context, "The city administrator may establish such additional reasonable and appropriate administrative rules and regulations for the administration of this ordinance that are not inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance. Any such administrative rules and regulations shall be reduced to written form and presented to the Buchanan City Council for the council's approval during a regularly convened city council meeting prior to any such administrative rules and regulations implementation." And that's pretty typical of the way, for example, Congress creates administrative agencies and then they give that rulemaking ability to that agency that's invested with the day-to-day carrying out of stuff, but even then, the agencies have to file back their rules and regulations before they can implement them. So I can't imagine what those would be right off the top of my head, but it's pretty standard when you've done something of an administrative nature like this, to let that officer, whether it's the zoning officer or the police chief or the fire chief or the floodplain manager or whoever it is, to have certain, be able to come up with certain rules to help discharge their duties.
Thank you very much. Council members, questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Comments?
Yeah. The calculation of the longevity, once that's calculated, Michael, that is not added to the salary, it's a lump sum payment at some specific time of the year.
That's correct.
Do you anticipate it would be at the beginning of the fiscal year or at the end of the fiscal year?
It would be at the end of the calendar year.
And so it would be December then?
Correct.
At some time. And it's separate from the regular?
Yes.
And they would receive a separate check?
Mm-hmm. With the exception, and if Mr. McCauley had mentioned all of the federal and state applicable taxes, it would not be, it would not be considered for any public employee's retirement system and nothing would be taken out of that.
Would you probably, at the beginning of the budgetary process, probably try to have a longevity payment in that fiscal year as something that you would budget for or as a year progresses and things are looking good that, you know, you felt comfortable in December that you can do it?
Well, it's something that we would have to, we would have to include in our budget when we're doing our budget discussions, but at that time, you know, we're going to have a pretty good forecast of where we're going into the next fiscal year until we do our budget. We'll also have the opportunity to have the information in front of us as far as other benefits like health insurance, you know, if there are costs there. At any point, at any point, once the new fiscal year starts out, if God forbid, there's some issue that somehow takes a strain on our budget, then we could through some action, you know, not have longevity pay at that point. So at any point, you could essentially pull the trigger on that.
Well, I would echo the comments that several people made about our employees and their dedication and how they greet the public and so forth. I've had a lot of very positive comments over the 10 years that I've been involved with the city and I've really never heard anything negative from anybody as far as being mistreated by any city employee. I have, I'm on the fence in regard to conceptually or philosophically longevity pay, but I think there's some real positives to that. It's an investment on our employees that have been here. But I also want us to recognize that, you know, we as a city have really held the line in a lot of ways in regard to total compensation for our employees and the, you know, you've mentioned before, Michael, that we pay 100% of the health insurance premium for everybody. That is very unusual and I hope the, our employees recognize that that is a tremendous commitment made by the city to continue that where many other employers have not. They have, you know, they charge 10 or 20% of the health insurance premium to the employees. Sometimes it's, they'll pay 100% for the individual and a portion of the family. They also do it sometimes based on the number of children. I mean, there's all sorts of different adaptations out there, but you know, if we can continue that, I think that's something that our employees really appreciate. Plus 14, what is it, 14% for pension?
It's 14, yes.
14% for pension is very unusual for most employers and so I think our employees, we do very good for them as far as total compensation and this is another element that would show how much we appreciate them, we can do it. I think that's something we ought to give serious consideration to.
I do want to state this, that the city of Buchanan, like other municipalities and counties in the state of West Virginia contribute to the West Virginia Public Employees Retirement System and the folks down there, I think the state auditors, one of the co-chairs and the state treasurer, actually set those percentages. The city of Buchanan does not set those.
We have no control.
We have no control.
I'm surprised they haven't dropped it based on how the...
Well, they drop it every, they drop it a half a percent in election years, which is why we're at 14. Non-election year next year will go to 14.5.
Michael, speaking of the employees retirement system, Item D under Article 2, why would this not be considered for deduction of retirement system benefit?
I can't, I can't give you a definitive answer. We have checked down with the state and that's the, that's the reply that they gave us.
Well, they said they don't want us to or?
They said it would not be, it would...
You can't?
So it's a one-time payment that doesn't affect the yearly salary?
Reviewed every year.
Reviewed every year.
Can be pulled at any time.
Can be pulled at any time.
Well, as I read the, as I read the draft ordinance, the council would have to affirmatively approve it, the language of F, say if during any particular year longevity pay is approved. So council would have to come in and say every year, yes. It's not like this gets put in and then it's automatic unless council says no. It's the opposite.
It's not an automatic, right.
It's reviewed, it's reviewed every year. I would also like to throw out, I think we should have a better minimum wage in our country and I just want to throw that out. About compensation.
You know, Dave, I will say that I was going to take on the battle of raising the city's minimum wage, but I didn't think that was something that we really wanted to get into a battle with yet, but I appreciate the fact that you've recognized that. I'd say maybe it could be something in the future that we may want to do. A lot of cities do that because of the fact that the national government, that would not be probably...
I think, I think we should do it as for employees, but I don't think we should be telling XYZ company down the street that what they have to pay.
Yeah.
I think it's something that we should try to encourage that ought to be done.
Yeah, Mr. Pew, what can I do for you? Go ahead. I've considered several items when it comes to extra pay for employees and I have voted against it a few times when it has come up. You know, I'd much rather see us be able to do an annual cost of living for our employees and give them what I consider a bonus which they may or may not deserve. Actually, we have, we have a lot of employees and 99 of 44 100s of them perform admirably and certainly do deserve a little bit of recognition. However, I don't know why, I just don't like the idea of giving a bonus to a, an employee of a government organization. I think more, it would be better if we had a system where as they could gain a, an actual bonus for doing exceptional work or for civil service testing or the GS system that the government uses or the E system the military uses for their, for their play, where you have to test and work your way up to different levels of pay. I'm not entirely 100% for a bonus system as such when all it is really is a glorified Christmas bonus and it's just a way of getting around a Christmas bonus, as in my opinion. I have no idea how I will vote on this when it comes up. I may change my mind, I may not, I may get more vehemently against it, but just my viewpoints.
Well, thank you. And that's kind of the reason why we have the draft now and the discussion, as long as we're open and having a discussion, it's a battle in itself and it's a progress as far as I'm concerned.
Can I state, can I state my thinking there? Since there were calculations going on, the general fund, Duke, because council governs the general fund, and taking into consideration the tier system and where the employees lumped into general fund, the amount that it would cost general funds entirely, police, fire, street, stockard, would be $7,550.
$7,000, what'd you say again?
$550.
$7,550 out of our general fund.
Correct. Have you thought about, I mean, because that'll obviously increase over time, except to the point where there's turnover, so I guess well, it's probably as good a, as good a estimate as you could probably make?
Well, that's just for one year. We're going to have to review it every year.
Every year we will review that amount.
But I think the council would be remiss if we don't recognize that all the utility boards should have the same opportunity as...
Well, it's included in this, I think.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I look at, it's just not $7,550. We approve or don't approve rate increases, so I think we need to be aware of what we're doing.
And I have a question, Michael. We have an employee handbook. What do you call this hypothetical situation? You've got an employee who's a problem employee, they're late, their work performance is not really good, and it's come time to give a longevity bonus.
That employee would be fired.
Yeah, should be fired.
Should save us the bonus?
Not should be working anymore.
And really, I, there's a problem with the word bonus.
I don't like the word.
It's really not a bonus. It's a real issue legally with the word bonus, particularly in the situation of the municipality. I would say this, and it would be to address Mr. Ron, Mr. Pew's concern, and that is, would, there are a lot of programs out there that unfortunately, that fortunately benefit the majority of the people, but there's always going to be the very few that benefit from it as well and take advantage of it. So unfortunately, that's just a fact of life and what we have to deal with, but if we want to reward and feel like we are giving back to the employees that are fulfilling the obligations that they have, sometimes we have to, you know, address those issues and termination was always one if they're not fulfilling their obligations for their job.
Can I make another statement? I'm not trying to grandstand, but this is where something like longevity would come into play. As alluded to earlier, the city pays 100% of health insurance that's out there. That's not always going to be the case and it's probably going to happen sooner than later, truthfully. I don't know with the healthcare reform or whatever you want to call that, how our renewals are going to be next year. At some point, council, through some financial situation, will have to have the employee pay a portion of the health insurance, it's inevitable. If you have longevity in there, it could help kind of soften the blow. I mean hypothetically... have longevity in there, it, it could help kind of soften the blow. I mean hypothetically, arbitrary number, if an employee now has to pay $100 a month on their health insurance as part of their premium, $1,200 a year, and they're going to get $250 in longevity, it kind of, I guess, softens, softens the blow a little bit. I mean, they're still going to ultimately pay out more.
What does a county pay? What do, there, there you'd no longer pay 100%.
I think it's an 80/20, isn't it?
I'm not sure what.
I mean, it's a, it's a huge impact when you make that change for our employees.
If I may, these are just proposed draft ordinances. In fact, three of these are already ordinances we've discussed before, we've looked at. I just wanted to make sure that we all had the opportunity for one last time. And for those who are here for the college, particularly zone, you see the repeal and we're on the way for it. We just want to make sure that this time we have the wording right, that everybody's on board, understands it, and hopefully at our next council meeting, we'll be able to approve to have the first reading of these ordinances. I would suggest if we're still want to talk about longevity, we would do that at the December 1 meeting. I think that would be the more appropriate time to really get into the discussions. If you'd like, again, everybody is welcome to that. If we could get back to Mr. McCauley. Mr. McCauley, do we have any questions, any other questions regarding any of this for Mr. McCauley?
Any other questions? Can you work please, sir?
There won't be a series of legal notices relative to all of those zoning related things that will have to be in the paper. In fact, one of them relative to the comprehensive plan. The one with the ADS property and the one with repeal of the college zone is just a class one ad, so I don't have to do it once. But because of the comprehensive plan state statute in chapter 8A, it says at least 15 days prior to the meeting at which the ordinance would be adopted. Well, if you look ahead to December 4 and December 18, there's only 14 days between those meetings. So you're actually going to see an ad in the paper sometime before December 4 talking about the December 18 meeting. It's the only way we can do it to satisfy the statute. So I'm not being presumptuous that you necessarily will approve the comprehensive plan on first reading at the December 4 meeting, but it's one of those catch 22 things. We, we just have to do it that way.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. McCauley? All right. We'll move on then. We have under the correspondence in your packet, it's a letter from Faith Baptist Church on the city street hayride request, request, request. I've spoken with Jerry Arnold. He has no problems with it. As Chief Gregory mentioned, he does not have any issues with it. So I would accept a motion to accept the Faith Baptist Church.
That's under the consent agenda, isn't it?
No.
No.
Okay.
I have a, did I give a motion?
I'll second.
From Tom.
I'll second.
Second from Mary.
It's a T4.
Opposed, I mean, any discussion on that? Opposed? Same sign? Yeah, I got it back. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have next our consent agenda. That's approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of November 6, 2014, approval of the building and wiring permits, approval of payment of the bills, approval of the city street hayride, which we discussed, approval of the 2015 city employee holiday schedule, and the city official record, record inclusion of the official mayoral oath of office. We can take out any force since we just did that. So I would accept a motion to, to approve the consent agenda.
Set moved.
Moved by Mrs. Alba, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Kupari. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Onto, let's see, the strategic issues for discussion and vote. I think you'll see in your packet, the, do we have, yes, we have the official letters of interest from Mrs. Edwards, Mrs., you know, that's Bill, Mrs. Bray, and the reappointment of Betty Weimer, who is one of the official first members of the official commission. I called her and asked her if she wanted to continue. And as a member of the, of the original commission, I felt that it, that she could bring quite a bit of information to it. And as much as we, you may think she's mature, I find that she is still very much involved with the love of animals and is still as bright as a tack. So having said that, I would request, I would invite a motion to accept the appointments of Edwards, Bray, and the appointment of Betty Weimer.
Set moved.
We had a motion and a second. No second? I'll second it?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Thomas seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Let's draw that again, Mayor. I'm not sure we got enough.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. So why don't we do a roll call, vote on that?
Very good.
Well, before we--
The discussion?
Yeah. What's the, what's the problem? What's your objection?
Discussion?
I don't have to tell you.
Okay. No, well, I just, no, I'm, because if it's come up--
No, I just don't have to discuss it.
No, no, I know you don't. I was just asking because I don't have a particular opinion about the issue. So I'm, okay.
His is irrelevant, any of them.
No, I disagree with that. We'll call the roll. Embiid?
Ron.
No. Mary.
Yes.
Rip.
Aye.
Tom.
Present.
You abstain?
I am.
Yes.
No.
Dave?
Yeah. Yes.
So it's a tie. All right. So any, with Robert's rules of order, if there's a tie, we can--
Well, it's not a tie, because I voted, because I abstained.
Abstain?
So three to two to one.
No, it is not a no.
Oh, it is?
It is not a no. It's not a no, it's not a yes.
Well--
Yeah, it is.
Was this something that's--
Technically it is, but because--
Is this something that we could discuss in executive session?
I think that's where it needs to go.
I mean, if it's--
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, too. We can do that. We can move that into the executive session then, if that's what we'd like to do. Okay, so we have that. Then we have our G2 shuttle bus parking, Night Train nightclub. Phil has been very patient with us to get through, and I know he signed up to speak. I just thought it'd be appropriate this time. So Phil, if you'd like to speak or--
You go here or there. Anyway, I'm Philip Campbell. I'm the owner of Night Train. I did make a formal request for a place to park the shuttle bus in the loading zone on the east side of North Canal Street across from the bar, requesting it for Wednesday through Saturday night from 6:00 PM until 4:00 AM. I believe I'm pretty much the only one that's open after 6:00 PM that would have any use for a loading zone at that area. Since I started running shuttle bus, as of last night, I've taken 67 people back to the college, probably 40 of which we really didn't want out walking the other streets, and I know for sure we didn't want them driving. The bus is short enough to fit in that loading zone, actually a couple feet shorter than it needs to be right at the moment. I planned on painting the bus very soon. Actually, I planned on trying to do it over the Thanksgiving holidays, but due to the accident and dealing with insurance companies and stuff, hopefully I'll have that done during the Christmas holidays. Plan on painting it dark gray, trimming it red, much like the, the building. However, if you can't see a bright yellow bus, I'm not exactly sure. Maybe ought to do something else with it. But anyway, I think it is very important to the city. I know that Chief Gregory and I have discussed it. I know Michael and I have discussed it and things like that. And I, I believe that it is working. I have picked up three people along the road between here and the college, one that was actually passed out leaning against a telephone pole sitting on the curb. So the need's there. When I grew up here, we had taxis. When I came back and realized we didn't have a taxi service, I felt that it was my responsibility to try to make sure that these people made it home safe. And unfortunately, through the years, I've had some friends of mine that were killed by drunk drivers. And I'm going to do my best to make sure that I'm not one that, I guess, empowers that to happen anyway. I also, in an unrelated thing, I have put a ID scanner I bought for the, the bar. It will tell you pretty much anything, and I have found quite a few underage and fake IDs and, and things like that. But anyway, back to the subject. If you all would please consider the option of me parking that bus across the street to load and unload bar patrons, or drunks, I guess is another way to put it. I, I believe it would be beneficial for the city, and I know it would also be beneficial for me, and I would appreciate it greatly.
I have one question. Do you have to have a special license to drive that bus?
I made sure that I bought a bus the size that you didn't have to do that week.
Good.
I did some research before I did this. It is a 16 passenger, doesn't have air brakes, does not require CDLs. So yeah, I made, I made a special point. Hank Ellis has the liability insurance on it and hallway 16 to 18 people. That was quite a shot in the arm for me. But anyway, I believe it's worth it. And again, I, I came because I felt it was important to me. I feel it's important to the city. And I really wish that you would consider my request for this and granted if there's any way you possibly can.
How often do you shuttle your customers to the college?
To the college? Well, actually, I kind of messed that up the other day, David. I had, had some people that, that wanted to leave, and normally what I try to leave is about 10 minutes after the end of closing. And I found out from, I had three young ladies that asked about a ride back, and I said, well, I'll be leaving 10 minutes after 2:00. They decided to go ahead and leave. Feel bad about that. As a matter of fact, I've been trying to hunt the young ladies down. From this point on, I will be making a run back to the college at 10 minutes after 1:00, 2:00, and then on Fridays and Saturdays, 10 minutes after 3:00, when we close the bar now. And again, I'm, we're open Wednesday through Saturday. And like I said, 6:00 PM until 4:00 AM, because I got to be out of there and home, so the dog still recognizes me when I get there. But like I said, I'll be running 1:00, 2:00, and 3:00 o'clock. And it also makes it very easy when I come back because nobody is in that. And I have tried to parallel park that across the street between a couple vehicles, and it's not the most fun I've ever had.
Is there any other question?
Question for, for Dave McCauley. We, potential for any liability issues for granting a request like this?
I really haven't processed it or digested that part of this potential puzzle.
As for parking, why would the, where would the liability issue be just for parking a bus across from the bar?
There are lawyers out there that could--
The liability issue ends up being Mr. Campbell's.
No, I understand. Well, I mean, the city gets sued for stuff that happens in front of businesses all the time. Or frequently enough to be concerned about.
Yeah, it's worth looking at because if we give the permission, there, there are, unfortunately, somebody will try and say, well, you know, you gave permission, so you're potentially liable, too. I think it's worth looking at, David.
Now, let me, let me make sure I understand. Are you talking about parking across the street to load or right in front of your establishment?
There is a, an active loading zone across the street. And that's what I, that's what I was planning on using. Yeah, I mean, I can park it in the street and load and unload people, but I'm blocking Canal Street. If you all want me to do that--
They won't let you. The city will ask you to do it.
Where do you park it during the rest of the time?
I don't open until 5:00 o'clock in the evening.
Now, you're aware of the bugs.
My house. I drive.
Okay. Oh, I see.
I will mention for the record that Jerry Arnold didn't get a chance to review this. He had no concerns as far as the street department was concerned. And I believe you heard Chief Gregory said he did not have any problems with it. That does not mean, though, that there may not be a liability issue, but those two departments didn't have a problem with it. I think the hours that we're talking about. But I think you see a great example of what Tom might be bringing, though, with the person who hit your bus. I mean, it's a big yellow bus, and they still hit it. So I, I, I understand--
I mean, I'm not saying that there is. I'm just saying that I, I think it's worth a little study before we just kind of go ahead with it. And maybe, I mean, maybe it's clear enough that it's not.
What's your opinion, David?
But I think it's a little caution.
It's an unusual request.
Yeah.
And basically, you're taking what is city property and designating it for exclusive use by a private entity. And that's, that, that might be okay, but I think that's what could be a triggering mechanism in what causes Mr. O'Neill's stomach juices to turn just a bit, is that, do we somehow become a partner in this enterprise by using city property to facilitate the operation of an establishment that primarily serves alcohol? I mean, it's, it's a kind of a circuitous kind of a--
I mean, I understand--
I'd at least like to think about it.
Can I ask a question? It is a loading zone. It is an active loading zone. Why can't I park in it without requesting? I did this in an effort to come to you all, tell you what I had in mind, and try to get your approval for it. But if it is in fact a loading zone, there's no time limits on using a loading zone, I just, out of respect for the council--
Sure. And, well, I think the issue is, pardon, because you want to, I think you want to, if I understand you correctly, you want to park it there from 5:00 PM continuing until whenever you're, or 6--
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM to, to, or whenever you're running it, until 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, whatever, as that case may be. So the issue isn't parking it there to load and unload people. The issue is parking it there from 6:00 PM until whenever your first run is, and then--
No, sir, incorrect.
Oh, is that, okay. Well, I want to understand, I should understand what you're asking.
I also, if I have calls from the college, I've also set up with Microtel. Some of the, the oil and gas people and things that are here cannot go anywhere because their vehicles have GPS on them and stuff. They call me, I go pick them up. The idea was is to get them home safe. But I'm not foolish. If I can bring them in and make some money off of them, I'm also going to do that. So to say that the vehicle, which is why I complained about the parallel parking, is, yeah, that bus is going to sit there primarily from 6:00 PM until 4:00 AM, but it could be going four or five times during that evening. That's the only reason I'm requesting that I can use it. And like I said, I think this particularly--
No, listen, I want to be clear. I mean, I applaud what you're doing. I think keeping people off the street and out of cars, especially when they shouldn't be behind the wheel, is, is really admirable. I just want to make sure, I mean, my only concern is I want to make sure that the city is not going to, for some, somehow, you know, end up being defendant in a lawsuit because this is happening.
We should ask our insurance company--
I have a question for Mr. McCauley. If, for some way that you might foresee that we become a partner in this parking deal because of his bus being parked there, loading and unloading, would we not become a partner in some of the storefronts downtown when their people are parking and unloading equipment and stuff for their stores, merchandise to be selling? I see that there is not any real difference in, in who's parking their loading zone or unloading zone. I, I really don't see what the problem is, and I commend, I think we think too deeply on this.
Let's try it this way, and then we can, we can get into the discussion. What I would do is entertain a motion to approve Mr. Campbell's--
I would make the motion that we approve Mr. Campbell's request to park in the loading zone from 6:00 to 4:00, 6:00 PM to 4:00 AM in the mornings.
And I second it.
All right. We have a second, we have a motion and a second discussion.
I just want to ask one question. First of all, I think it's a very good idea because when my kids were in college, and, and I'm not naive, my kids went to the bars like everybody else, 90% of everybody else's. And I would have loved for them they had that there. But of course, I went after them several times. Okay? But a loading zone's a loading zone. I agree with Ron on that. You know, no matter who parks there, it's a loading zone. Have you had any problem with not being able to park there?
No, absolutely not. I, I haven't parked there, have specifically not parked there until I came to y'all and asked, you know, official request for that. As far as there being people parked there at night, no. 90% of the time, there is no one. So I don't have a problem, I mean, parking the vehicle there. I guess my biggest concern, like I said, I'm going to have to load them, I'm going to have to unload them somewhere. Now, whether I'm either sitting in the middle of Canal Street or using the parking thing. And I guess I do have another question. Does anyone know, how long can you sit in a loading zone?
Do you unload?
Okay. That's what I'm talking about. How long can you sit in a loading zone?
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
One other thing. I would like to request that when you paint that bus--
Yes, ma'am.
--that you do not paint it, that people aren't going to mistake it for the Stockard youth bus.
What is this, Stockard youth bus?
It's red.
Red.
Absolutely. Then I can do whatever color. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
West City colors, orange or black.
Yeah, I mean, I can do whatever color. That was my initial thing, was gray.
I don't care if it's all gray or red, but I just don't want people saying, oh, I saw a Stockard youth bus sitting there.
That's a good point, Dave.
Yeah, I mean, I can do whatever color, that was my initial thing, was gray and...
I don't care if it's all gray or red, but I just don't want people saying, oh, I saw a Stalker Youth Bus sitting there.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, do not have a problem, did not know that their bus was painted that color, and if someone could get me a picture and stuff about it, I will make sure mine looks nothing like theirs.
And I just, can I say something else?
Please. Phil, I work in the daytime right next to the American Legion Building, and right next to that is the Cadala Lounge, and I work at a hearing aid place, and we're doing testing. And here comes this big old beer truck, right up on the sidewalk, two times a week. There's not a loading zone there, and they block the whole road. Never seen anybody get a ticket. People have to walk around or come up close to the wall to even get through there.
Call for question.
Yeah. All right, I've had a call for question. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Pose same sign.
I abstain, I abstain.
I abstain also.
I still think...
This needs further study.
I still think we should talk to our insurance carrier.
So you have four ayes and two abstains.
What's that mean?
That means they're passes. Thank you very much, Phil. Thanks for coming, good to see you again, buddy.
Thank you very much.
When you and I were growing up...
Thanks for everything, Phil.
Smokey Gross would take you home, too. City police would take you home, even spend the nights at Smokey's house.
Now, West Virginia colors. Hey, Phil, if you ever need a backup driver, you let me know. I've got a friend named Rose, she's always been...
I appreciate you listening to me, thank you very much for the approval permit.
What's your Vegas chief, bro?
What do you mean? We have several things here, some of the guys are eating at the club. Our normal burgers are six ounces, our steak and cheese, we actually have pretty good food.
Thank you very much, Tom, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your help.
Moving on to our comments and announcements, Mary Alba.
Oh, I go first.
You go first.
Okay, one, I'll try to make this really quick, I'll try to. It's been brought to my attention that over in North Buchanan and the other areas, there are residents who are unleashing their dogs at nighttime, who like to roam to the neighbor's yard to do their business. Please respect your neighbors, and keep in mind that the leash laws are in effect twenty-four hours a day, and they will be enforced. Okay, the next one is, someone told me that, she wanted me to say this, so I'm going to say it. Also, if you don't want that cat or kitten, please do not throw it out on the side of the road, that is heartless and cruel. Okay, and it is, and it's sad. Okay, I'll move on. Special thanks to everybody who came out to salute the veterans on our community Veterans Day celebration, and I'd like to say that we veterans worked really hard to bring that beautiful day with the wonderful weather. We ran out of energy to keep it here beyond that one day. Thanks to all who participated, direct traffic, paid tribute, and I want to let you know also that tomorrow at nine o'clock at the Buchanan Middle School, if you haven't already been to a Veterans Day program, the middle school's going to be doing one tomorrow, and they do a wonderful job. This will be the second year, and that's due to Kathy McCauley. It's going to be a great program, though. And also, there are three hundred and two banners at Jawbone Park Pavilion, and thanks Create Buchanan for making that happen. And then, lastly, I'd like to say publicly state that Mayor Edwards, I fully support you as our new mayor. Several years ago, yourself, me, Ron, we all went through the, what was it, the Buchanan Leadership Academy, okay, together, and we went through all that training and everything, we learned how to get involved, maybe sometimes too much involved, but we got involved and we got involved with the community and started trying to make a difference within the community. And so, I was very proud of that training that was brought to us here by the city, the county, Wesleyan College, St. Joseph Hospital, and I don't know who else was the sponsor at that time, but that might be something that we might want to look in down the road to get back, another class such as that, and because what we learned was how it's important for us to, that we're all connected, you know, the city, the county, Wesleyan, St. Joe's, and all the businesses, we're all connected because this is home, this is our community. So, I'd like to see that happen. And Rick, you know, I always offer you my friendship, but I, my heart is with you because I know this is a big step for you, okay?
What, Wesleyan?
No, I don't know, but I think that you're going to be just fine. I feel confident in our city council, and I want the people out there in Buchanan land to know that I'm very proud of our mayor, and I'm proud of our members of council, and I've seen changes already in the way we do business here, and I like it, okay, and I'm proud to be a part of it.
Thank you, Mary. I know, I appreciate you, and I know our council does, and our citizens do, with your outspoken and your grace. Ron, Mr. Pugh.
I yielded my five minutes to Mrs. Alba, so...
Did you?
I will just say, I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving, and be careful out there. If you're deer hunting next week, also be very careful, there's a lot of crazies out there in the world, and God bless.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas.
I'll make a few comments. I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving, and having Wesleyan students have a safe trip home and back. I think that December first is a very important workshop for us, because we have a lot of issues that I think we need to really get on the table and discuss, and I encourage citizens to attend that meeting and to participate with their comments and ideas. I think that's important to do, whether it's a fire fee or a police fee or BNO, or, you know, Mitch made a very passionate talk about we need probably another paid firefighter. It's something that we really need to address, it's important for us to do that. And I encourage, when you, Mary, talk about the dogs being unleashed or roaming around, we really need to do more in, as far as enforcing what ordinances we have, that's really, that's really critical. So, and I also would like to thank Mr. Davidson, he's not here, he left, but after the meeting, last council meeting, we, he and I went out for a little bit, and we were talking about, you know, his mayorship, and I said, Kenny, I said, in my opinion, this way to look at what you've done or not done is, are things better than when you came in? And I think they are. And we still have a long way to go, I think we're a great little community, and we allow that to our employees and the different officials that have helped out on committees, and I appreciate that. One last announcement, I debated whether to say this or not, but this time of the year is really very unselling for a lot of people, because they don't have the kind of resources that all of us have. And I'm not saying we're wealthy or anything, but the Salvation Army and the parish house and the churches are always looking for donations to provide for people that are less fortunate. And I know I'm not active in the Salvation Army officially and formally, but there's a lot of angels out there on the trees, and I would encourage people to, if they have the resources, to pick up an angel, and it's very rewarding when you give. And also bell ringers, we're looking for bell ringers again this year. I've got a phone number for you, six-two-two-twenty-three-sixty, and there's a lady by the name of Ladonna, she's making the master list for bell ringing in this community, and I know a lot of our employees do that, and again, I debated whether to say this this evening, I'll probably say it again in another council meeting, but a lot of people need help, and give what you can. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Mrs. Kabare?
I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and that when we're all sitting at the tables feeding our bellies to the top of our necks, we need to count our blessings, that we have the freedom to sit there and have a meal with our families or to travel throughout the United States. And also, I want to welcome our new mayor.
Thank you, panel, appreciate it. Mr. O'Neill.
I would like to state that I have enjoyed being a member of this council for nineteen months now, and I'm taking this opportunity to announce that I intend to resign from council effective November thirtieth. My growing family has long since outgrown our house on Fayette Street, and we've been looking for a new house, and the best house for our family unfortunately is outside city limits, and it's here in Stillen Buchanan, of course, but, you know, so if this is a, if this is an opportunity to pitch for annexation, then, you know, and maybe once I'm, once I'm really, we've bought a house, we haven't moved yet, but maybe once, once we do move, I'll start agitating for annexing my new neighborhood out of Deer Creek into city limits. So, I want to thank the members of council for being wonderful colleagues and good friends, and not to put anybody on the spot in particular, but if, just thinking about how I came on a council with my appointment, if Robin's interested, I would encourage the members of the council to consider Robin to replace me, but in any event, I just remember the precedent, you know, the precedent that was set or followed or whatever when I came on board. In any event, I do it with a great deal of reluctance, and with more than a little bit of sadness, but it's really kind of unavoidable in our situation.
How many bedrooms do you have in your new house?
Five.
Five, because I had a nice house right behind me that...
I know, and we looked, actually, we looked at that house, and it wasn't...
Then you found out that you're named...
No, I knew you lived next door. It just, it wasn't, it just wasn't...
Wasn't big enough.
Was not big enough.
Where is Deer Creek?
Out Stony Run.
Stony Run, okay.
So, with that...
Best wishes to you, Tom, and good luck.
Thank you.
And, you know, don't be, don't be a stranger, because you ask...
No, I won't, no, I'll still be in town, I'll still be around.
But you ask a lot of good questions.
If there was a way to stay on, and, you know, I certainly would.
Get on the animal carriage.
Well, I just wish that we had more housing, more housing options for large families in city limits. There are a lot of houses in city limits, a lot, but...
But they're small.
But they're too small, for us, at least.
I've lost two lawyer families in my neighborhood now in the last two weeks.
Congratulations.
I feel like the neighborhood is really growing up.
Davis, do you have a question, sorry?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
What's that, sir?
I don't think anybody's mentioned the time of day for that December first meeting. What time is it?
Five PM.
Five PM.
Five PM.
Five PM, yeah, we've said that several times, Davis.
I didn't hear it.
Last council meeting you said it.
Thank you, Davis.
And at the end of this tape, I want to make sure the public knows what time also.
Thank you, it is five PM. Let me start by saying, as much, it was an honor for me to give Mayor Davidson the proclamation and the gavel. I learned so much from him in the last six months practically through the experience with him, but I've learned a lot more over the years working with him and talking with him that I take as a mentor, and I wouldn't be as comfortable sitting up here right now if it weren't for him. And absolutely, Mr. Thomas, he has left this city in a much better place than when he came in. So I, I am humbled by the comments that you've given me and the support that each of you has shown me as I've transitioned into this position. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your patience, as you see me go through the meetings and try to become a little bit more comfortable with everything. I want to thank the citizens for all of the, all of the comments and all of the accolades and all of the support that I've been getting from the citizens. I hope to fulfill the anticipation and those commitments that they feel that I need to do for the city, so I appreciate that. I also want to thank our city crews and our city departments for all of the work that they do on a continual basis. As Mr., as Mayor Davidson, right Mayor Davidson, has said, we could not be the city that we are without them, we could not be the city that we have without our administrative staff. So I want to say thank you, I want to wish everybody a Thanksgiving, a safe Thanksgiving, watch out for any of those kids who are going to be out of school the next week or so, so thank you, that's all I got to say on that. One last thing, I will defer to Ms. Amy Jenkins, as she sits here as the city recorder during our minutes and as she does in our utility boards, I would defer to her and see if she had any comments to add to any of this, because I feel that she, she has that right. She doesn't get to vote, she has to sit here and write it all down, but I think she should have something to say if she would like to say anything.
Well, I appreciate the recognition, but I have nothing to say.
Okay, well, I like that. So what I'll do is, as per executive...
Can I recommend something you might want to announce, because depending on how that executive session goes, we might make a decision.
I was going to actually do that after I mentioned it, but...
Oh, sorry.
We are fixing to go into executive session, so actually, if you'd like to sit around, we are perhaps going to have a decision afterwards. If not, we can always email that to you as well, if you don't want to sit around for too long after that. So, as per executive session personnel, Mr. McCauley would like to say something.
One more quick thing.
Sir?
We've got these ordinances coming up, and some of them are going to require public notices in advance of the actual meeting that you're considering. The next meeting after your December eighteen meeting is January one, and that's a state holiday. So you probably won't have a meeting on January one, so that I can be planning these ordinances and plugging in dates relative to what's going to emanate out of your workshop on December one. Is that something the council has already thought about as to when you might reschedule your Thursday, January one meeting?
We haven't yet. Is that something that the council would like to take into consideration at this point?
Back up a week.
We could back it up a week, that's a very good suggestion.
Or the first of the following week, perhaps? Friday, January two might not be the best time either.
Ooh. I'd just go the next Thursday.
I can make a choice.
The next, the next Thursday would be...
I'd say the following Thursday, I think that's a really good recommendation.
That's the eight.
I agree with that, so...
Second.
And a second? On Mr. Pugh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, machine carries. Now, as per West Virginia Executive Code, WV six-nine-A dash four, we will stand in adjournment for the executive session, that means everybody... Thank you so much for coming.